It is 6 o'clock, so we will begin our meeting of the October 19th, 2023 Plan and Zoning Commission for the City of Des Moines. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plots unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for a rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Okay, can I get a motion from a commissioner to approve the minutes of the October 5th Plan and Zoning Commission?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, all those who pass. Who weren't here. If you weren't here, yeah. Thank you very much. I will now read through the consent agenda items. Actually, I will start with the continued.
Yeah, maybe do that.
Okay, item number three on the consent agenda is actually going to be continued to the November 2nd meeting of the Plan and Zoning Commission. A request from Professor Holdings LLC for property located at 1315 York Street. If I can get a member of the commission to make a motion to continue that item. I'll move. Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, now going back to the consent items. Item number one, a request from Larry Henson for vacation of approximately 1,250 square feet of north-south section of undeveloped East 22nd Street right-of-way located to the west of 2,200 Elizabeth Avenue, bounded by Easton Boulevard to the north and Elizabeth Avenue to the south, to allow the vacated area to be assembled and maintained for private use. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like this heard on the public hearing? Seeing none, are there any commissioners tonight who would like this item to be heard in the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, item number one will remain on the consent agenda. Item number two is a request from City of Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency for the following regarding two parcels located at 33128th Street and 3408th Street. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. To amend Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to high-density residential, and to rezone the property from N5 Neighborhood District and NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District to NX2 Neighborhood Mixed District, to bring the existing multi-household dwelling into conformance with zoning requirements, and to allow construction of a new accessory, storage, and maintenance building. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like this heard in the public hearing? Seeing none, are there any commissioners here tonight who would like this heard in the public hearing? Seeing none, item number two will remain on the consent agenda. Item number four is a request from Lone Wolf Realty LLC for land in the vicinity of 7,900 South Ridge Boulevard, for determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM, and to rezone the property from MX3-V Mixed Use District to MX3 Mixed Use District, to allow the development of the property for an auto dealership that would include vehicle sales and vehicle maintenance and repair minor within the vehicle sales and services category. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like this pulled off of consent and heard in the public hearing?
Does that mean that it will just rezone it, or does that mean it will be okay?
If it remains on the consent agenda, it would be rezoned, because that is what is in the staff report, is to re-
That has to go through.
We are a recommending board, so it goes to the city council. Would you like this pulled off and heard in the public hearing tonight?
Sure.
Okay, we will remove item number four and hear it in the public hearing. Item number five, a request from Taba Islamic Center for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, the Taba Islamic Center Playground for property located in the vicinity of 1407 21st Street for Type 2 Design Alternative, to allow a landscape feature, which is a playground with a front yard setback when these areas are required to be set back at least 15 feet from any front or street-side property line. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this item pulled from consent and heard in the public hearing tonight? Okay, seeing none, are there any commissioners who would like this item pulled from consent and heard in the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, item number five will remain on the consent agenda. We also, yes, we also have one item that can be moved to consent. Item number six, a request from Rallycat Properties for vacation of the southernmost 100 lineal feet of a north-south alley right-of-way in the vicinity of 601 24th Street, which is within the block bounded by High Street to the south and Woodland Avenue to the north, to allow the vacated area to be maintained for private use. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this to remain in the public hearing tonight? Okay, is there anyone on the commission who would like this to remain on the public hearing tonight? Okay, seeing none, item number six, if I can get a motion from a commissioner to move item number six to the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Thank you, Emily. All those in favor, raise your right hand. So the items on the consent agenda tonight are item number one, item number two, item number five, and item number six. Can I get a motion from a commissioner to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Okay. Thank you, Carolyn. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you, and we will begin tonight on the public hearing with item number four, and Sriyoshi from staff will present. Again, if you were here for any of the items that were on the consent agenda, you're welcome to leave if you'd like.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sriyoshi Chakrabarti Planning Staff. Item four is a rezoning request for a large parcel in the vicinity of 7,900 South Ridge Boulevard. The request is to rezone the property from MX3-V Mixed Use District to MX3 Mixed Use District, which would allow the applicant to develop the property as an auto dealership use. The auto dealership use falls under the vehicle sales and services category. There would also be some minor repair work that's proposed on the site, and therefore the vehicle sales, vehicle maintenance and repair minor uses is one of the other uses that's proposed for this particular project. This is the subject site. As you can see, this is at the intersection of East County Line Road and Southeast 14th or South Ridge Boulevard, as it is referred to in this particular location. It's just north of the interchange of Highway 65 and Highway 69. Along South Ridge Boulevard, there is more higher-intensity commercial and urban uses as you move further north into the urbanized area of the city. Further to the south, there's more highway-oriented uses, more EX, proposed EX District and business park-type uses. This is a screenshot of the subject site. As you can see, it's currently undeveloped, a large parcel. This is looking west along County Line Road. There is some existing, there's some existing single-family dwellings to the south of County Line Road. Again, this is looking east, and as you can see, there's some vegetation that flanks the southern boundary of the property. This is looking, if you can follow my cursor, that is the intersection of South Ridge Boulevard and East County Line. These are some pictures of the conceptual documents that the applicant submitted during the rezoning process. Please keep in mind that these are very preliminary and conceptual in nature and are subject to change. This is just a kind of elevation, front elevation, if you will. This is the proposed layout. As you can see, this gives you an idea of roughly what the applicant is thinking of. There's the building. It's about 43,205 square foot in area, and there's parking around it, and vehicle display proposed. Currently, you can see on this conceptual sketch, they have showed three accesses. There's one access off of Highway 69. The applicant has since done a traffic study, and this access will not be allowed by the State Department of Transportation, so that access will go away, and the applicant will be reconfiguring some of the design. So this is fairly conceptual and preliminary in nature. This gives you the proposed floor plans and just kind of shows you a breakout of how the space is going to be within the building. And these are some of the front, rear, left and right elevations of the proposed building. Another aerial view of potentially what the development could look like. So staff has reviewed this particular request. It's a fairly large site, about 7.8 acres. As I mentioned, generally, in the vicinity of the site, there's highway-oriented uses proposed to the south. There is a mix of higher-intensity commercial and more urban uses to the north. As you may have seen, there's large swaths of Southeast 14th that have the -V designation, and the -V extension is specifically referencing vehicle sales and rental display and prohibits such uses along the corridor. And this is just to prevent a large accumulation of vehicle display lots right next to each other. So that is the intent of having the -V designation, to prevent such agglomeration of vehicle display lots along the Southeast 14th corridor. So with this request, the applicant is proposing to remove the -V designation in order to allow the auto dealership use. Staff believes that this request does conform to the land use of the area, which is community mixed use. Of course, the proposed rezoning will require that the project bring the site into full compliance according to the city code, so there will be site plan process required, and the site would also need to comply to supplemental regulations that pertain to this particular use. So the proposed dealership is located, this particular location is located at least a mile away from any other auto dealership lot. Therefore, staff thinks that in this particular case, this will be appropriate, also given that if you are traveling north along the South Ridge Boulevard, this is a nice entry point into the community, and if the site is brought into compliance with the current design codes, this would be an improvement to the existing character of the travel corridor. Therefore, given those considerations, staff is supportive of the rezoning request, so long as everything is done according to the design regulations as well as the supplemental regulations. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request to rezone the property from MX3-V to MX3 District and removing the -V extension to allow these particular uses. We did get some comment cards. We got one in support, and we've gotten a couple in opposition. And this is the consent map. As you can see, the opposition was from the property owner to the south of East County Line Road, and that brings up the percentage against to about 19.69%, so I just wanted to note that. So that's the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, well.
This is a, could you show the site plan again, one of them? The first one that you showed with the parking lot. Yeah, that's good. Look, this is at a gateway to the city of Des Moines. I think County Line Road or thereabouts is the city limits, and when you come in from the north, there on the kind of the southeast side of the corner, southeast, no, northeast side of the corner, there's a Welcome Des Moines sign and several flag poles and so forth and so on. So the city has made this really as an entryway, a gateway, and a welcoming point to the city of Des Moines, which I think is great. My question is, first of all, when the site design is done for this, are these parking islands that are shown in green going to be included in the design? And my other question, my questions are about landscaping.
Yeah.
And so I'm wondering, and I'm hoping, that the islands will have some kind of landscaping feature in them, and also there'll be trees that will be, you know, edging the property in some way or another. Could you talk about that, please?
Yes, the applicant, as I mentioned during the presentation, the applicant will be required to comply with the requirements under Chapter 135, and so they would have to conform to the landscaping standard in Chapter 135-7, which lays out the landscaping requirements for the site, including the parking lot, which includes the islands and the other associated landscaping.
And I would just add that if they were to seek waiver of anything, I mean, landscaping is something we can sort out administratively, but if it was substantial, you know, that would be something that would end up in front of the Plan and Zoning Commission, so you'd have the opportunity if we felt that it was getting out of line.
And that's the reason I asked the question, Jason, because, you know, it will be expensive to do that, but on the other hand, it is the gateway to the city, and so, you know, first impressions are important. Those are my questions, thanks.
Yep.
Chris, did you have a question?
I apologize for not being fully understanding. So the V itself means that this would be unable to be done without removal of a V, where there'd just be extra steps in order to have this usage if the V remains?
If the V remains, that would not allow them to have a vehicle display lot, which I think would be part of their auto dealership proposal. They would want to have automobile display lot, but having the -V designation doesn't allow them to do that, which is why they are seeking the rezoning to MX3, which would allow them to.
So under the old code, we had an overlay district over the East 14th, Southeast 14th Street corridor, probably had it in place for probably a good 15 years, that prohibited new vehicle sales lots. There had been concern about the proliferation of them on this corridor and its impact to the corridor's ability to, you know, for other investment, you know, scaring away other investment. As we adopted a new code, we carried that forward, not so much with an overlay district, but by creating this -V expression or district. And so really, all we're doing is rezoning it to eliminate that prohibition of this particular, of that vehicle sales use. I don't know if that helps explain. Can I think of it more as like an overlay district? We just don't have that tool.
Well, that's why I was curious. I mean, is it, so it isn't necessarily an overlay, but this -V, if this was anywhere else in the city with a -V, it would also be prohibitive of vehicle use regardless of how close it is to anything else?
Yes.
Sort of like a distributed overlay district?
Yeah.
Sort of?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question about the lighting. I realize this is, we're not considering site plan, but just because this property is near single-family residential, is there, does staff consider, or are there additional requirements when a property like this is close to residential? A lot of vehicle sale places are next to other commercial places, so that's why I was asking this, if there's going to be any change in how lighting is done because of the vicinity to residential?
Lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they'll be subject to the photometric standards in Chapter 135, which do account for a difference. The standards vary based off of what's around you. Is it a commercial use, is it a residential use?
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to check that. Thank you. Are there questions from any other commissioners?
I have a question.
Yep.
In the past, we have seen some proposals along the corridor, Southeast 14th, that have been rejected for auto sales. So other than the distance, what else was considered from a staff perspective to be in support of this specific request?
So, and I apologize, I don't have the land use map here, but we looked at the proposed land use generally in the vicinity, and of course, along Southeast 14th, there's higher-intensity commercial, and certainly this kind of use would be appropriate, but also if you look further south, currently there's single-family housing, but the proposed land use is EX and business park, which is complementary to the land use and the proposed use in this area. So we took that into consideration. Also, as it was pointed out, this is kind of the gateway into the community, and if there is a good quality development that follows the city design standards and is developed according to the design standards, appropriate landscaping and building materials and so on, then this could actually be a welcoming and appropriate use along this corridor and fits with the highway-oriented uses that you typically see in locations such as this. So those were some of the factors that we took into consideration.
And I think another way you can look at it, too, is this is a large format auto-oriented use, and, you know, where in the city do those make most sense? And that's near things like bypasses, interstates. This is right off the bypass. It is a very large site, so very auto-oriented part of town.
Excuse me, I think it's also, we need to point out, this is going to be a new car lot, as opposed to numerous used car lots that have or have, don't have any landscaping, which is quite numerous along Southeast 14th Street.
Commissioners, have any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Sriyoshi.
So.
Not yet. Sorry, we'll get to that. Is the applicant here tonight? Okay, you may come forward, state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes to present.
Good evening, my name is Alicia Cedarall. I'm at Whitfield and Eddie, 699 Walnut Street in Des Moines. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I don't have a whole lot to add beyond what staff has already described to you. What we're proposing here is a large format new and used sales vehicle operation, consistent with the other dealerships that the applicant has in the area. This is Kengarf Automotive, so there are Ankeny Locations, Clive, et cetera. You know, we feel that this is outside of the primary, you know, small business development corridor that the -V extension was intended to address. We're about a mile away from any other dealership, and from a business perspective, this makes sense to us, given the proximity to the Highway 5 bypass and the auto-oriented uses that come with those kind of highway locations. We feel that, you know, given this location, it's not going to detract from the city's revitalization efforts along Southeast 14th Street, and we believe it's consistent with the other light industrial and business park uses in the area and the future growth of the city southward. So, you know, as far as landscaping and site design concerns, our plan is to make this an attractive dealership and fully work with city staff, assuming that this rezoning is approved, to address any landscaping, lighting concerns at that time. Any questions I can answer?
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Is this, is the current design something that's seen to be in line with the intentions of the ordinances and design, or is this just something conceptual, just to get on the map, to like worry about the zoning? Or is this actually what someone's wanting this to actually end up looking like?
So at this point, I believe it's pretty conceptual. A fair amount of the exterior elevations are going to be ultimately determined by the auto manufacturers and the relationships that we have with them, but at this point, this is conceptual. This is very similar, though, to the design that we have in other locations around the metro area.
So everything from building location, circulation, all those are still not set?
Very much under review. Yep.
Any more questions for the applicant? No? Okay. If you would sign in on the white sheet there on the table. Thank you very much. If there are any proponents of this item, people in favor of this item, you may come forward now. Okay? If there are any opponents of this item, you may come forward now.
You can go first.
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Okay. Mary Conrath, 2123 East County Line Road, and it is not paved, and it is a very busy street. Have they done any checking to see what the, how many people go down that street every day and fly? It's not paved, and there's going to be two entryways, and I'm just afraid that there's going to be a lot of wrecks. I've lived across the street from it for over 50 years, and I just don't want it there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
And thank you for signing in. Any other opponents for this item? You may come forward now.
Yeah.
You may come forward.
So I'm her son-in-law. I live in that house at the top. If you know-
Can you speak?
Yes.
Name?
Armin Dafino.
Okay. And your address?
What is our address? 2011 East County Line Road.
Okay.
It changed three times.
Okay.
So those two driveways that come out, why do they have to be adjacent to the driveways across the street? Can't they be offset? Those cars that are coming out of there, and they're going to be open at night, are going to come out, and the lights are going to be in the, you know, in our house. going to come out, and the lights are going to be in the, you know, in our house. It just seems odd that they ended up at that exact, those exact spots. The other thing is, there are trees there. They're not very nice trees, but I'm landscaping, and some trees in there would be awesome. Keep the wind off of us, and like, like there is now, because they're not much of trees, but they do keep the wind off our house. So, that's, I'd rather have this than a lot of other things, but my mother-in-law and my wife, if my wife was here, she'd probably hit me, because she doesn't want anything to do with this. But if we have to have it, I'd appreciate it if they could do something with these drives.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And can you sign into the white sheet? Thank you. Are there any, is there anyone else here who would like to speak in opposition to this item? Okay, is there anyone who would like, who's neutral, who would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none...
Do you want to notify everybody on County Line Road that this is going to happen?
Jason, can you speak to that?
Sure. Everybody within 250 feet of the subject property was mailed a notice.
Like on the frontage road, right?
Yeah, so if we can go, we can show you the map. So, everybody within that double red line was mailed a notice. So, that's that 250-foot radius around the subject property.
Okay. Can, the applicant has five minutes for rebuttal.
Can I clarify on that real quick?
Sorry.
Is Conrath, is, you guys are Conrath? Is that right?
I'm Conrath. He's Dafino.
She's Mary, but to the right, to the side, is Ryan Conrath.
Yeah, he's next door to me.
He didn't respond, so that's why he's not red.
Gotcha. And so, just out of curiosity, on these maps in general, if someone who's actually from the public is citing opposition, does that count towards an opposition, or has to come in a card? Because doesn't that affect the percentage?
We need, for the percentage, it needs to be in writing.
Gotcha.
We can take it here at the meeting, if they have, want to take the time to do that, but I don't think Ryan is here, right? Or is Ryan here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'll just add that we did do the traffic impact study as part of this application, and we are actively working with the city on what improvements may need to be made to County Line Road. We're aware it's in rough condition, and certainly something we would want to look at, you know, as we move forward with site design. And then, just to reiterate, all we're looking for is to drop that minus V extension, you know, what we're proposing would otherwise be consistent within the parameters of MX three. So, with that, I will...
Just a question. Yeah, go ahead.
Do you have a question, too?
You go first.
Well, thank you. You heard the comment from one of the residents about the proposed entrances and exits from this lot, right across from their driveways, which seems very bizarre to me, and if I were a resident, I wouldn't like it, quite frankly. Can you redesign this some way or another to prevent that problem occurring?
I will certainly talk with our design team. What we put up here at this point is conceptual, so that is not set in stone at this point. And, you know, where those entrances ultimately are located is going to be a product of the city review process.
And I think Jason can correct me if I'm wrong, but staff typically proposes that to match with the adjacent driveway.
Yeah, our traffic engineering does promote generally the driveways line up, because then, then if you have two people opposite each other, it's safer, because they can see each other, and they're not going to, they're less likely to have an accident. So, that is a normal way to handle driveways, so I don't, it shouldn't be surprising that that's how the concept came in. I think that's, and I don't think that's, I think that's normal across the country in planning, not just City of Des Moines.
Is there a probability or a possibility that at least that section of East County Line Road would be improved by the applicant or by the city if this went for?
Yes, I think that's something that we looked at closely. I echo what the applicant has said, that, you know, there's the traffic study, and that'll kind of dictate the conversations that we have, and trying to figure out what kind of improvements. And I think it's probably even more important, the fact that the DOT isn't going to allow them to use South Ridge Boulevard, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will now close the public hearing and open it up to commissioners for discussion and motions.
So, to be clear, all we're looking for is, we're really just talking about rezoning. We are not talking about site plan or anything. Okay, thank you.
Well, that's where I, I guess I do aggressively agree with where I think Will is going, and I think the residents are going, is that I'm not sure we really want to put an Ankeny car lot in this location, so I'm hopeful that there is a lot of new work that will be done on making sure the site plan is appropriate for the gateway location it's in. However, I mean, it's not clear to me that the logic behind the zoning, which is what Carolyn identifies we're doing, that would otherwise prohibit this business as really sort of necessary. So, I do hope that, you know, we will be looking, building location, driver orientations, road quality, especially in County Line Road. But I guess my leaning is that the purpose of the zoning, in this case prohibiting this opportunity for this business, does not seem like it makes sense, so I would support changing the zoning in this case for that reason, not to try and be in conflict with the logic of gun before.
Is that a motion, then?
Sorry, I will move staff.
Okay. Great. Okay, if there's no further discussion on this, the motion is to move staff. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, here on to item number seven. Request from Jose Collin for review and approval of a public hearing site plan. Collin Concrete LLC Warehouse for property located in the vicinity of 308 Southeast 33rd Street for the following type-two design alternatives. I will just say A through D, and leave it to Nick to go through those and explain them.
Thanks. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpe, planning staff. Kind of the opposite of the last thing that we just looked at, we're not talking about zoning at all. We are talking about some site plan stuff. So, A through C really have to do with the building design, materials, things like that. D is a site thing, so I'll try to break that down, too. The other thing I want to note, and if you read your staff report, you'll have an idea of this, and I'll show it in the photos, but really, this site plan is really a response or a reaction to zoning enforcement action that we've had at this property, that the city has had at this property. There's been an active code case at this site since about 2019. There's been a business that's been operating here without an approved site plan. It's a contracting business, so they've been storing vehicles and equipment and materials outside without an approved site plan. They have the correct zoning district to do so, so that is fine. They don't have to rezone or anything, but if they're going to do those business activities at this location, they need to do so with an approved site plan. So, the applicant, they were notified of that, and then they've been in the process with us for almost a year now, dating back to preliminary conversations and bringing the site plan through. There's a few things, obviously, as you can see on the screen, that they're not in compliance with, with city ordinances and codes, and that's why we're here tonight. So, does that make sense to everybody? Okay. So, here's an aerial of the site. It's highlighted here in orange. Really, when we're talking about the specific site area for this actual business where it would operate, is if you can follow my cursor, it's really right here. So, the applicant owns this whole extent, all this property here. This area over here is actually part of the floodplain, so it's not developable. The applicant, they're not proposing to touch or disturb that area in any way. There's a couple of pre-existing homes that are here. Those would remain. They have legal nonconforming rights, they're not going to be touched, but the new building and the site improvements would generally be like in the extreme northeast corner of the property, so where my cursor is. Here's some photos of the site from our zoning enforcement staff. This is on Southeast 33rd Street, looking to the north. You can see that this is a dead-end street. This cleared area right here is generally the site area. You see that the pre-existing dwelling that's further to the south. Here's another photo of the site, kind of how it operates on a day-to-day basis. This is really what it looks like. I know that the photo's dated from last year, but this is really what the site looks like today. Just another photo, just showing some of the business activities at the site. Again, just another photo, just to give you an idea of how it operates today. So, digging into the site plan here, so here's just a layout of what's proposed, and as you can see, we have this whole extent of the property owner, but really, they're really sticking and developing in this area, highly by my cursor. So, we've got the pre-existing homes that are here, we've got the new building, just about 6,000 square feet, parking area out front, vehicle maneuvering area, outdoor storage area, and then a stormwater management, stormwater detention area. So, that's, that's how that's broken down. So, really digging into the building design, like I said at the outset, really, the key issues here are some of the design elements, so transparency, building materiality, roof materials, and then, from a site perspective, the parking. So, this elevation here, this view that's highlighted or outlined with my cursor, this is the east side, and this is what faces the street. So, per the building type regulations, they got to have 12% transparency, that's 12% glazings with legit windows. They proposed about 7%, so that does not meet our requirements, and that's required to be heard by the commission. This metal that they have shown here is a 26-gauge metal. We are, we do allow the use of metal in limited quantities in most of our zoning districts, but it does have to be a specific gauge or thickness, so the code prescribes at least a 24-gauge thickness. They proposed 26, which is thinner. And so, part of our recommendation, and you'll see it when we get there, is that they utilize a 24-gauge metal. They've got this adhered stone veneer material here at the base, from grade up to two feet. And then, the other thing I want to point out, too, is that this roof that we're looking at here, it's a metal roof, which is allowed, but it's got exposed fasteners. So, if you're going to be utilizing metal as a roof material, it's got to have those concealed fasteners, otherwise known as a standing seam roof. So, that's another key to the relief that they need. Floor plan, we can come back to that if we need to. So, digging into the staff report, thinking about building transparency, like I said at the outset, 12% is the requirement. They proposed 7. As staff, we thought about it, and we understand, thinking about the context of this area, it's pretty industrial, we're not necessarily on a major corridor. We understand there's not necessarily a need for the building to really interact with the public realm like it would be in a lot of other, our walkable corridors throughout the city. However, we do think that the transparency should be at a minimum level where we could approve it administratively, and it does add just a little bit more architectural integrity to the building. So, our recommendation for the transparency piece is, you don't have to necessarily be code compliant, but bring it up to a level where we can approve that administratively. And then, thinking about facade materials, want to note about percentages, as well as thicknesses of metal. So, at least, all sides of the building are clad with at least 85% metal. Per our code, the maximum is actually 60%. So, our staff, we looked at this, we thought about it, and we're okay with the quantities of metal that's proposed, so you can exceed 60% on all the sides, even the street-facing sides. We are okay with that. The big point, or the key thing that we want to point out, is the type of metal that's utilized. So, like I said before, they're proposing a 26-gauge metal. That's not considered a major or a minor facade material per our ordinance, and so if they would swap that out with a 24-gauge, which just generally is more durable, I mean, obviously, there are aesthetic concerns as well, but I think our primary concern, what we're coming at from a staff perspective, is that 24-gauge is just, it's going to be longer lasting, it's going to have a better warranty, things of that nature. And so, as staff, we're okay with the metal that's provided, we're not saying no metal, just if you're going to do it, make it 24-gauge and not 26. And then, similar with, with the roof materials, metal roofing is fine, there's no design alternative of relief that's needed for that, if they wanted to utilize that, but if a metal roof is utilized, it should be with concealed fasteners, a standing seam style roof, as opposed to one with exposed fasteners, because, especially with the weather that we get here in Iowa, those are really subject to wear and tear, wind, sun, snow, things like that, and that can really wear it down over time and degrade it. And then, lastly, thinking about the surface parking, per the code, any surface parking's got to be in a side or in a rear yard. Here, we recognize with the floodplain especially, there's some physical constraints, you've got specific vehicular maneuvering needs. There's really not an abject reason why the parking cannot be placed in front, so we were generally, we were supportive of that request. So, digging into the staff recommendation about Part A, thinking about the building transparency, staff, we're okay if they don't meet the 12%, that's prescribed per code, but they need to bring it into what we call a Type One or administrative approval range, so within 30% of that. Part B, thinking about the metal, like I said before, the quantities of metal that are proposed are okay with us as staff. Our recommendation, though, any metal that is utilized on the facade of the building be upgraded to a 24-gauge instead of the 26 that's proposed, and then they maintain that two foot of that masonry-like veneer that they have at the bottom. And then, Part C, thinking about the roof materials, we're recommending denial of that request. If they're going to utilize a metal roof, it's got to be that standing seam variety and not a roof with exposed fasteners. And then, Part D, thinking about the parking location, as staff, we are okay with the parking lot and the vehicular maneuvering area being located in the front yard. That's not a problem for us. So, that's our presentation. I can take any questions.
I've just got a few curiosities, I guess. Are there sustainability impacts associated with increasing the transparency, like heat loss or those sort of items?
Sure, yeah. I mean, it would be harder for them to meet prescribed energy code that they would have to go through as part of their building permit review, definitely. So, that's, that is a consideration, for sure, that they would have to think about.
So, we might increase cost of windows and decrease their capability of getting through the energy code?
That's accurate, yes.
Okay, so that seems, and then, the cost differential, 24, this is just actually, apologies, I don't know a whole lot about metal gauges all the time, sorry, but differential between 24 and 26, is there, you know, is there data on, because you referenced insurance and warranty benefits, is there any data we have with respect to the cost differential versus the cost benefit of those items?
I don't, I don't have that. I was speaking in a generality, thinking about, you know, and it depends on the brand, obviously, too, of what company they're doing, they're utilizing, but in general, I think we can say that a 24-gauge metal is going to be thicker, it's going to last a little bit longer, it's going to have a stronger warranty than something that's 26.
All right. And then, the last one is, same with the fasteners, I mean, is there data on the actual durability of the fasteners, relatively speaking to the cost?
We don't have city data necessarily, but I think if we think about it, if you've got a fastener that's exposed to elements, to rain, to sun, to snow, to wind, those are going to get rusted over time, they're going to get beat up a lot more. Now, if they're concealed or they're hidden, and they're kind of underneath the roof, that attachment method is not going to be harassed as much, thinking about weather and things like that, so it's just, it's generally going to last longer, because it's not going to be bothered. If it's exposed to the elements like that, you know, debris, water, things can get inside of there, can expand it, can break it up, can lessen the integrity of it. So, that's the rationale behind that. Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah, no, I mean, I get the logic on those things, I'm just curious as far as whether the data holds up to the theory and something, it's like a platinum replacement joint, right? It turns out those will actually kill you, even though they're supposed to be sort of good. So, just curious.
Any more questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Nick. And I assume the applicant is here. If you state your name and address. State your name and address, and you have 10 minutes.
My name is Paul Gurkey, 1880 Brody Street, Waukees. I am here on behalf of Mr. Collin, so as Nick mentioned, he's been kind of chased around for the last couple of years. He found this site thinking it was a good spot to, I guess, lay all this concrete equipment out, right? And he was wrong, in a sense. You look around the area, and it is, I don't want to say rundown, but this is the place for industrial warehouses, things like that. So, to kind of give you a little context, I'll get started here. So, agenda items, we just ran through those with Nick. One thing I noticed in the Iowa Code, Chapter 18B, that we're supposed to reference, is the second line there, promote activities and development that are consistent with the character and architectural style of the community, and should respond to local values regarding the physical characters, or character of the community, excuse me. So, as we consider that, here is some context around the property. So, as we look to the north, this is a transportation warehouse, for lack of a better term. As you can see, what we're proposing is very in line with what is going on here. The pavement actually ends, turns into the gravel you see there, and then you're stopped by the fence with barbed wire, so that barbed wire continues. This is a little bit further west, same property to the north there. And then, as you look east, so they own all that property as well, chain-linked fence, gravel, kind of some overgrown grass in there. This is about a quarter mile to the east, was looking for just some comparable properties, I guess, within the vicinity. Again, as you can see, the ribbed metal on the front, no stone windows, a nice accent painted door there, and a pine tree. Half mile to the west, so this was built approximately four years ago, if the records were correct. You can see metal facing the primary street or primary facade, and then, we also have parking in the front, and then the ribbed metal roof as well. The windows also don't meet the glazing requirements for transparency, so just some things I'm starting to pick up on as I look around this area, trying to... I'm starting to pick up on as I look around this area, um, trying to fit our building into the, the greater context of what's going on in this area. Um, I don't know if you mentioned, this is south of the fairgrounds. So if you've ever been in that area, you kinda understand, uh, this is the place for these sort of buildings. Um, I don't think what we're proposing is that much different than what is there. Feel free to stop me at any point. I'll kinda go through this, and then when I'm done, we can chat too. So, uh, evaluation of character, another thing from the agenda. So 50% of the developed lots within 250 feet of the subject property are designed and constructed consistently with the requested design alternatives. Um, you saw the prod, uh, property just to the north, exactly what we're proposing. So we can check that box. Um, I know to the east, I don't know if that's considered undeveloped, but it does have a fence around it, and it's part of that property to the north. So I know there was a bit of an obscure code there. If it was undeveloped, you assume it to be with the new codes and all that. Um, I'm assuming that to be part of the existing property since it's fenced in. Second item, whether directly adjoining developed lots are designed and constructed consistent with the requested design alternatives, again, same sort of thing. So... Uh, as we move into the facade transparency, uh, Nick laid that out well. We're at 7% right now. I know they can administratively approve this at 9.4%. Uh, we'd be looking at adding about four more of the windows we have proposed, or 36 square feet. Um, as the architect, it is my job to, I guess, follow the form with function, make sure everything works correctly before we decide how this looks. Um, now, when we look at the elevation with the pre-engineered metal building behind it, you can start to understand how choppy things are getting. Um, sometimes the answer, I find, is not always to add, but to reduce. Um, and you'll probably see that a lot around town. It's, we all have the tendency, we want more, uh, we wanna control things more, add more. But in reality, in this context especially, adding more windows is starting to create, I would say, a less pleasing, uh, major facade, but that is my subjective opinion. So if we need to add more, you know, I think we can. If you look on the right third of that building, that's where some of the offices and utility rooms are. So, um, we have a break room, that's where those two windows are servicing. And then on the left-hand side, those windows just feed directly into the, the storage of the, the building. So... Um, the facade materials, so the 24-gauge versus 26-gauge, um, Jose bought a pre-engineered metal building, 60 by 100, comes as a whole package, right? Building in a box. Um, came with the 26-gauge panels. From an integrity standpoint, we still have a 25-year limited warranty. Um, stating exactly that, will not rupture, feel structurally perforated due to exposure to normal atmospheric corrosion. We protected the base of it with, uh, two-foot band of stone, bollards around all the doors. The inside's protected with blanket insulation. So really, the, uh, chance that the metal is going to be dinged and dented is fairly minimal. Um, on the east side, we do have a sidewalk across the entirety of that major facade. So we're trying to prevent, I guess, any damage from happening. Um, when you talk about aesthetic value, there is no difference, um, in aesthetic value on the gauge of the metal. There's a chance we'll have to re-engineer the entire building or just start over if we have to upgrade the metal. That's a question that'll have to go to the engineers. And then, um, 26 is the industry standard, and as I mentioned, there's no visible difference. So, um, to answer your question, Chris, if we need to replace the wall panels, we're looking at about $18,000. So, these are on site. I'd love to find a way to work with you guys and come up to a, a happy medium or a common ground so we can utilize this in some fashion. Um, Jose's committed to this project, you know, he's paid every bill on time. So I'd like to kinda commit to him that, you know, we're working with him, not against him in some of these aspects, but totally understand, uh, the minimum gauge requirement. And then the location as well. Um, so Plan DSM, future land use plan designations, industrial, uh, neighborhood precedent is all ribbed metal panels, all facades, uh, no stone that I've seen. So northeast, southwest, industrial, west is the floodplain. So, move on from that. Here's a look at the elevations. So you can see the banding of stone. Um, the south facade, we got all the bollards by the doors just protecting that base metal around the openings. And then the west and north, really, nobody sees those. They face the floodplain and kinda the back end of the parking on that transportation facility. So the roof metal, um, standing seam 24-gauge, uh, we have the 26-gauge ribbed metal. Um, neighborhood precedent, again, all ribbed metal. Um, one unique circumstance in this building is a roof gable faces the road. So there's really no visible portions of the roof, I guess, when you're coming up, uh, southeast 33rd from the south, you may see some of that. But, um, when we look at the site plan, you'll see there's a lot of trees, as you understand that are required to be put in there. So it'll start to create a barrier between the two. Uh, the 26-gauge panel comes with a 25-year warranty I mentioned. I do have a cut sheet here, if anybody's so inclined to review that. Kinda talks about some of the warranties, just things like that. So, on the roof materials, we are looking at $31,000 to replace that, um, to the, I guess, or not sustainability, but the lifespan of it. We can completely replace the roof with ribbed metal, um, twice before we hit that number for the, um, standing seam metal. So if it fails after 10 or 15 years, we can buy a whole nother one and still be cheaper than what this standing seam roof is, is looking to cost. So here's your street view, just seeing some of the landscaping, the parking up front, the metalstone windows. And then the surface parking location, sounds like there was really no, um, resistance on that, just due to this site plan.
Well, the 10 minutes is, is out.
That was fast, okay. Let's cruise through here. So site plan, conclusion, uh, just small business. Hire seven to 10 people. Um, he's committed to doing this project. We're committed to working with him. I know he hasn't followed the rules, but I'm here to help him, I guess, realize the, the mistakes he's made, and hopefully we can come to a conclusion.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
What's the current projected cost of the building right now?
He's doing all the concrete work himself, so I'm not entirely sure what he's planning. He's hoping to spend $350,000. So the building itself was $80,000. Uh, I believe he's estimating about 60 for concrete, and then the rest, or, well, a third party estimated 60 for the concrete. Um, so whatever savings he'll see, obviously doing that in-house. He's also self-GC-ing the project, so he's gonna just see inherent savings there. Um, yeah, $350,000 is what he said his budget was for this project.
But on the building itself, I guess what you're saying is you have one of the modifications requests is a 50% impact, and the other one is roughly a 25% impact. Is that right, roughly?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so you're almost doubling the building cost with these?
Yes.
Is, is the entire building on-site right now, not just on order, but is it on-site if you drove by?
Yes.
Two more questions, I guess, on that. Um, on the other facilities you identified, do you, did you actually identify, you said, "Oh, these are the same. I know they're metal", but did you identify what gauge they were?
No, I did not identify the gauge.
And we also don't know as far as, uh, roofing type, is the roof type as per what's recommended, or is roof type as per your design and the ones in there?
The adjacent properties of the precedent?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, those are all ribbed metal with the exposed fasteners. So, um, that's what we're proposing, but that's not what is allowed.
Gotcha, okay.
Any more questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone who would like to speak against this item? Okay. Uh, you may come forward one at a time and state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Sarah Hildreth. Um, and I'll speak, and then I also brought, um, a letter from my neighbor. I don't know how you'd like me to handle that.
Staff will take it. Thank you.
Do you want the?
Okay. And, um, her name is, uh, it's Tanisha and Jawan Hughes, and their address is 505 Southeast 33rd Street. I guess, uh, the first thing that I would want to rebuttal is that, uh, to the applicant, um, you know, this area is not a dominantly industrial area. Yes, there are other businesses in this area. There are other businesses that are, um, you know, in the same type of way. Yes, correct. However, the street that this business is currently running on is a residential road. It is, has no other businesses on it. Um, it's only residential. It's a dead-end street. Um, so, and as far as like the aesthetic is concerned, um, the only property that has run down is the one that we're addressing, 308. So, um, you know, I don't feel like it fits with the aesthetic of our neighborhood at all. And then I would say that, um, for over the past year, we have observed the behaviors of the applicant. Um, and obviously, you know, these issues are not exactly pertaining to what is on the docket today. However, um, some of them do pertain, and I just want it noted, um, as a matter of public record, um, that we have opposition to this. Um, so dump trucks are carrying dirt, speeding down Southeast 33rd Street, using air brakes and horns multiple times a day. Vehicles coming and going from the property speed down the street as well. The current parking on the property is visible to the street and not, uh, impressive in appearance. And the dirt and debris, debris on Southeast 33rd from the heavy equipment, um, vehicles and machinery that go down the road, um, you know, is all over our road, which we never had before. Um, again, this is a dead-end street where children, pets, elderly people live. And, uh, these vehicles running up and down our road every day, um, is just pretty, not nice as far as we're concerned. So, um, the only other thing that I would say is that, um, you know, obviously, this is not concerning whether or not they can run a business there. But we pointed out these items to show a lack of respect for the community and our neighborhood and following raw, laws and rules. So why should they be allowed to not have to, you know, maintain these, these codes that the city has obviously put in place for a reason? So, that was my statement. And then, did you want me to read the letter from my neighbor?
Commissioners, have you all had a chance to read through the letter? Yes, okay. No, you don't need to read it out loud.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We do need to keep it, if that's okay.
Of course.
And if you would sign the, the white sheet there, thank you.
Should I put her name down as well?
Um, no.
Can I clarify? So your neighbor and you both live in I-1 as well? Your houses are I-1?
Correct.
Okay, if you would like to come forward and speak, you may do so now. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yeah, hi. My name's Gunther Hildreth. I live at 501 Southeast 33rd Street. And I'm here to oppose this, um, recommendation about the warehouse. So, we've, we've lived here, uh, since the house was new and built like in 2004. Uh, yes, we knew it was industrial. At the time, everything on the street was residential. Uh, the gentleman living at that property passed away, which is how the property came for sale at some point in time, uh, which is, I believe, when Jose, uh, Collins bought it. Um, and since that time, we've had nothing but issues, lack of respect for the neighborhood. Um, one thing I wanna point out too is that, yes, this area is zoned industrial. The adjacent properties that were pointed out, or yes, they're metal buildings, they're warehouses, nobody lives at them. They're not residential properties. So, this warehouse going up in a residential industrial area is just kind of out of place for the, the area in the time. And really is gonna kind of impact house values, I feel, in the area that nobody really cares about, um, and things like that. So I'm just in opposition of the, the warehouse going up and the lack of respect that's been shown towards anybody that lives on that street by Mr. Collins. So, that's just my opinion. I appreciate it.
I have one question.
Yes.
How many houses are on that street?
Uh, so, there's two on the east side, and there is currently three on the west side. Um, two of them have been the two other pro, well, actually, I'm sorry, there's, there's five on the west side, including the two that Mr. Collins owns up there. Uh, two of the properties were destroyed or, or torn down. And, and here's another issue, I guess, we have that isn't really being spoken about. There's a property that is being rebuilt currently right now by, I believe, Mr. Collins, but I'm not for sure, that has been sitting under construction for a month due to the fact, I believe, permits were not requ, were not obtained. Things are being done illegally. And so it's just another, like we said, Mr. Collins doing whatever he wants, trying to get away with whatever he can, because rules don't apply to him until he gets caught. So, it's really been nothing but, but opposition, you know, and kind of a, a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no one else, uh, you, uh, have five minutes for a rebuttal.
I believe Mr. Collins is maybe not running an appropriate business now, but he's committing to running an appropriate business in response to the zoning violations that he's received. I can't control that there's dirt on the road. I know we all deal with that. No matter where we're at in the city, right? There's construction sites. So, um, I appreciate the feedback by all means, but he's putting his money into this. So he's committed to doing the right thing. So I think we need to at least give him the opportunity to do that. And if he does not do that, then I think it's time to come back and we can have those discussions. But for now, I believe he has every right to put up this building on the site he has in the industrial zoned portion of it. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion and motions.
Uh, let me offer my opinion. Uh, as everyone probably knows, I'm not a nitpicker regarding regulations and rules, but I think what we have here is an applicant who goes off and does what he wants, and then, uh, then it comes to us saying that he violates the, uh, ru, rules and regulations. Can I get away with it without any real explanation other than it's, uh, supposedly cost-saving for him? So that's my opinion, and I'm not supporting any, his, uh, request for rezoning.
The request for, for design alternative. So what you meant, you, you're not?
Excuse me, request for a design alternate.
Okay, thank you.
The, uh, the regulations about the gauges are, um, published in the zoning ordinance. Everybody has access to that. It's not, um, anybody else's fault than theirs if they didn't read that before they bought it. So I'm not inclined to offer relief either.
Anyone else, or would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move staff.
Okay.
I just do wanna clarify that I've heard a little bit of comment about not supporting requests in general. Staff recommendation is kind of a hybrid approach, so I just wanna make sure you understand that, um, there are some parts of it that we are recommending approval of, some of denial, so.
I, I, yeah, I, I thought that the staff did a good job of kinda threading the needle there.
All right, the motion is to move staff. If there's no further discussion, I will call a vote on that. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Pass?
Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes.
Can I just say one thing, or maybe Jason can help? I just want the people in the audience to, like, understand that there's not anything we could do. If they had made the building, or if they had designed the building in compliance with all the design alternatives, they wouldn't even be here tonight, they could have just built it, so I just want them to note that.
Right, there's nothing that we can do about the running of the business or the current zoning of industrial.
Yeah, and I think, it was Sarah, I think she said her name once, but I think Sarah noted that, that she understood that, you know, we had, our scope tonight is somewhat limited, our enforcement staff obviously are aware of this site, and then also the other one that's not too far away that you mentioned, the house, I've heard about that one as well, but, so we'll, you know, those staff will continue to monitor those things and act on that.
That was my question, Jason, the picture of the adjoining houses to the south didn't look appealing to me, let me put it that way. And is there something that the city, were you talking about that and something the city can do to try to address that problem?
Well, I don't remember which house, which building parcel, I don't remember all the details, but there is one that, if my memory is correct, pulled, he pulled a renovation permit and actually ended up tearing it down and building, starting all over again, so I don't know, Nick, do you know which one that one is?
I believe it's this one right here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
So he's basically building a whole brand-new house on top of the previous foundation.
I think that we should, we all know that the city of Des Moines is based on complaint basis, and I've heard a major complaint about this property, and we hope that the city would follow through.
There's an active code case on the property, it's been, it's been active for a while. So we do, our zoning enforcement staff is, they were following up, they knew this was coming to the commission tonight, so they are aware.
Yeah, we're actually here because of enforcement.
Yeah.
And I also have an additional comment, Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
We had a similar problem with an area next to Interstate 235, that it was zoned as industrial, a lot of residences. I can see this map right here, that east of this property, it's a bunch of houses, but they're all zoned industrial. So I'm not really sure, and I don't recall what we did with the prior area, but I know there was some action that was done there, so I will encourage the staff to take a look at what can be done in this area, because we're only going to see more of these requests as buildings go up.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, those are all the items on the public hearing tonight. We also need to approve the 2024 schedule of meeting dates, which was emailed to you with the other materials for tonight, it's also on the screen. Looks like there is no meeting on January 4th or July 4th, otherwise, as far as I can see, it is every first and third, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. I get a motion to approve the 2024 meeting dates. So moved. Thank you, Carolyn. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Committee and directors' reports, Jason?
Yeah, I have two items. Wanted to let the group know that Kara Maher has resigned, I'm not 100% sure when her replacement will be appointed, but wanted to share that. And then the other is, we are getting close to election season, and so if we could tonight, I'd like for the, for you all to formulate your nomination committee. I think those that have been on the commission for a while know that, you know, we usually have three or so folks that volunteer to be on a nominating committee, kind of think through a slate of officers for next year, we vote on those in January.
Yep.
So without turning over the chair to kind of facilitate that.
So I'm looking for three volunteers from the commission to be on the nominating committee to decide who will be chair, vice chair, and second vice chair for next year. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, great, great, cool. Okay, now it's, okay, okay, great, thank you very much.
Did you get them? Did you, you have?
Yes. Katie, Todd, and Andrew?
Yeah, that's awesome.
What's that?
They have plenty of [inaudible].
Okay.
That's your whole point.
By being on the nominating committee, you can prevent that. Okay.
The only thing, I'm sorry, do you have?
Go ahead.
Do you have your group?
Yeah, I believe so, I have three.
Okay, perfect. The other thing I about forgot is, we will have a 5:30 session at the next meeting, so, yeah, so keep that all on your radar, and hopefully you'll be able to get here for that session, so, thank you.
All right, Kayla, we've got a pretty short meeting.
Yes, yes. Includes the meeting, thank you.